Greetings, good people. Welcome to another edition of Leaders and Learners, the South Bay Edition, where we get to talk all things South Bay. And today, we have an incredible guest. Well, maybe you'll think he's incredible. We'll see. Make sure you stick around so you can let us know what you think after we're done. But we have for District One of Redondo Beach, California's City Council Candidate Darren King. Now, I don't know if you know very much about District One, but it is a very important district in our community. Paul, tell them a little bit about District One.
District One is the heart of the village, the Riviera Village. So that is probably the one of the bigger commercial revenue generators in our city. And it's also the one with the most coastline in our city. So it's an important district for as far as our tourism and our commerce.
Miriam, what are your thoughts on District One and how important this position is?
District One is super important. You know, we have many residents that live there. Like Paul said, it is a big revenue producer for us in the village. It, you know, it's also the start of the esplanade and it's a beautiful area. Many people, not just from Redondo, but from all over the South Bay and probably all over California come to the esplanade to visit, to walk, look at the ocean. And lots of, you know, lots of dogs, lots of people. It's just a great area.
It is also where our tourism community really spends a lot of time. Most commercials and even when the news comes out and does things on Redondo, usually the south, that part of Redondo Beach is what you see, District One. So to talk about his candidacy, let's bring in Mr. Darren King. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you. How are you? Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, we can hear you, Darren. How are you doing?
Very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, Miriam. Hi, Paul.
Well, let's go ahead and get into it. Darren, what are you doing here? What's going on?
What am I doing here is a good question. Since this is a podcast, well, first let me apologize. I'm getting over something. I don't know if you can hear it in my voice. But I'll do my best to just project like I do. So what am I doing? I will take the long answer because I said, because it's a podcast and this will fully allow for a long answer. So why am I here? The best answer is that I realized in conversation with my wife that our District One City Council was going to be termed out. And that would leave a gap there. So it kind of in talking with her kind of fit the things that I think I'm good at. Administration, I think I have, you know, a good neighborly spirit. I want to be good to those around us. I have the availability, the acumen, and so it just made sense to kind of say, okay, you know, I'm here. I want to couch it in a special way, which is, you know, that most people ask, why are you running? And I try not to phrase it really in the way of running. I feel like running kind of means chasing or seeking. I feel more like I'm making myself available as a good steward, someone who would be a good steward with the right heart, the right attitude, the right skill set. You know, in a way where, you know, say you're walking down the street and someone in front of you trips and falls. Of course, you stop and ask them if they're okay. You help them up and make sure they're good. But you're not secretly walking down the street, hoping that the people in front of you fall down so that you can help them. So I could sort of view it like that. I'm here. I'm capable. I'm good. And I think if the people want a good steward for the city, open, transparent, you may not get everything right all the time, but we'll tell you why and it'll always be informed. And, you know, just here to be what people want their neighbors to be, hopefully, that's what I want my neighbors to be.
Great perspective. Paul, you want to go ahead and get us started?
Yo, answered my first question was, why are you running? And so the next question I would have is, what would you change about Redondo? Or do you see it needs change?
Well, let me give a good pat start here, which is that Redondo Beach, in my opinion, is really the best place to live in the world, given our geography, our weather, our coastline, our proximity to Los Angeles, the mountains, San Diego, the beaches, Disneyland. Heck, I mean, all of it, this really makes the best place in the world. There isn't anywhere that I could think of that I would rather live. So in that big sense from 30,000 feet, nothing really needs changing. It's just sort of on the granular level. What can we do? I guess my answer in sort of reviewing a lot of the spending that we do, I think we could probably do more with spending less. I think that's part of it, but I don't think that really speaks to your question. What do I want to see? I'm a parks guy, so I'd like to see just if I could really an expansion of that community feel, which would be to me parks, dogs, and maybe that's more of a District One thing as Miriam started with, with the dogs. But I just want to keep it, you know, and I would couch myself as well as sort of slow growth. Pro-business certainly, but I don't want a lot more traffic and those things. I want to just kind of work on whatever it is that can keep us small to the extent that it can remain small and focus on parks and green and things like that. Oh, that reminds me, if I could ask a question, you had a prior guest, Ms. McKenzie, what happened with Andre Leroux's hedges? I heard that, that conversation and I checked his website. I wanted to see what became of that.
We didn't get an update, but it's hilarious that you actually asked. Do you know, Miriam?
No, actually, that's a good question, Darren. I've been meaning to reach out to Andre to ask him because I did want to know where we're at with that. He was posting some updates once in a while, but I haven't heard anything in a bit. So I need to, maybe we should provide an update on the next podcast, Tanya, like at the beginning.
I went to his website and there was no further data available. This is legit. It all made great sense. It was.
That's a legitimate issue.
Okay, so getting back to your candidacy, I would ask any candidate, what differentiates you from the current Council One or District One Councilman? And how do you see yourself standing out from the people that you're running against?
I guess I would just want to frame it in terms of myself. I really don't know anything about these folks personally, professionally. Obviously, everybody has, well, you guys haven't seen it yet. I've seen their candidacy written statements. You know, they seem like fine fellows trying to do their best, but you know, again, harkening back to my original answer, there does seem to be an underlining, I kind of want this element. I kind of look skeptically at that. Again, I don't want to impugn anybody. I just know that for myself, I am honest, ethical, transparent, and really just would always give an answer to somebody who asked a question and just say, this is why, and be able to articulate it for them. So, I mean, is Nils doing something terrible? I don't know. I mean, I tell you this, I haven't heard some of the best feedback from folks that I've talked with. I mean, he does have some support, of course, and I'm sure he'll generate some interest from there. The other two gentlemen, I know that Mr. Waller has run for office before. And the other, you know, Rolf has also been on a number of things. So I, maybe they're just great public servants and doing their best. Don't, don't have anything to say about them. I just know that I would stand out if I were examining the candidates and say, this is a good neighbor. This is a guy who's smart enough to get the issues. He can catch up to speed if he doesn't know anything. And he will do his darndest and his honest best with a pure heart. And listen, for me, overall, this is really coming from a place of gratitude. It's funny, I'm looking at the box. I mean, I don't know where my eyes are looking, but I'm looking at you, Paul. The, it's just all about gratitude. My wife and I spend a lot of time just really thinking about how lucky we are to live where we live. Knock on wood, we have good health. You know, Alex is our 19-year-old. Everything, everything's great for us. And it's just about wanting to give back and.
So what are your? Are you, how long have you lived in Redondo or the South Bay?
10 years since 2015. I had moved back from, at the time, I went to Philadelphia where I had a small bankruptcy practice there. I was only there for four or five years or something. Before that, I had grew up in, you know, Southern California, basically my magic mountain. Graduated from Canyon High in 1992 and, you know, did a little traveling, a little working, but basically I'm an LA kid.
So my question really quick would, would be, you know, in order to solve problems, because every position comes with problems, you have to ingratiate yourself a bit in the city, in the culture to see what's missing, right? So I can't fix a problem if I don't know exactly what the problem is. I would love to know from you what you think the biggest problem is in District One. And I understand the slow growth piece of it, but I would love to understand. It's been difficult for people to be pro-business and slow growth. That's how we wind up with three bills on the last election where residents wind up having to pay for the improvements to the fire district, the improvements to the school, the improvements to the police department. Slow growth has gotten us to a place where now residents are having to pay for these things that the city would. So I would love to hear from you what you think the problems actually are and how do you see a fix? So that residents don't continue to have to pay for things that a city should have to pay for. The balance has been really off. And again, that's why residents are now paying for these things that a city should be.
And you mean by the ballot measures and the bonds and things, you're talking about those things? Okay. So I guess I have a two-part answer. The first would be to address the first part where you said that you need to ingratiate yourself and have that long route. I'm not totally convinced that's the case. I would actually think, and I view myself favorably in this regard, that not having a deep ingratiated history there kind of makes me a bit of an outsider in a good way. I think you kind of need some fresh eyes in certain places. And I'm not saying you don't want to be aware of the history, but you got to be careful who your bedfellows are in some sense. And I like that freshness about my candidacy. Now, as it relates to the expenditure part, or at least that's what I'm interpreting your question. Which is really that, you know, again, I was looking at the budget as early as this morning, or as recently as, you know, half of our budget goes to people or personnel. So much is that's discretionary or basically the discretionary portion is really not that much. I mean, the budget is, what do we have, $120 million? And I would say, what was it, 70 plus 28, something like 98 of the 120 is really things that about which we can do nothing. I don't think that's necessarily the case. So to answer your question, I think we need to find a way to spend less and you know, this isn't necessarily popular, but I think that you could probably do the same with less personnel expenditure and then direct the funds elsewhere. I think the government probably needs a superior audit of its capabilities and personnel expenses. That's probably the shortest answer to your question or the best.
You know what I have a follow-up on that is the bonds. Did you support the bonds?
So we could go through them. FD, yes, I think that's fair. I mean, why not? Given what we just saw in the other parts of Los Angeles, you got to have, you got to be prepared. And, you know, given my profession, I worked as a criminal defense attorney primarily. You know, actually, good policing is important. I'm not, I want that even from my perspective and the perspective of my clients. I mean, not to mention as a guy who would need to call them if there was a prowler. In fact, we have four things. So of course, there, I would, I think, again, we could go through them, but Beach Cities Health District, I was a no because I think they tacked on too much there. I think we could have done with probably removing the old hospital building first and then having a second referendum on what to do with the space. I just thought they added too much to it and it probably made it unpalatable to the voters. I'm a proponent, okay, so this is, this is a big part of it, is this Article 27 stuff. And I don't like the City Council taking the power as it relates to housing and things away from the Article 27, which says that when things get, you know, a certain growth element, i.e. traffic and other things that qualify it, that it would require the citizens' participation in deciding what's there. City Council usurped that. I don't think it was properly written. I think it was a bit, I think if you had asked the people voter by voter, if you would have gone through one by one and said, you're voting, what are you voting for in this? I don't even think they would have known. I think they would have said, okay, this person supporting this, oh, they're a council member, maybe, maybe it's a power grab. I don't know. It just seems like it's putting the power into the hands of the City Council instead of the people. I like keeping things tampered down as relates to traffic and growth. Obviously, we do have to have some housing. We have to develop certain things. But that was, you know, Measure RB. It passed, but again, I don't even think that the people knew what they were voting for en masse.
I agree with you on that. It was written to be very confusing and I think that was a deliberate act. It was hard to explain to people, but it passed. Such as like, we're going to have to deal with repercussions of that.
Well, why not? Why can't we be a little bit more on the vanguard of pushing back? Now, this again might may not be particularly popular, but you see what Huntington Beach is doing. They're obviously litigating this issue and they want to take it to the Supreme Court. I think they're going to run into the same problem with the Supreme Court, who's going to say they don't have standing. I think it's a standing issue. Maybe a technical issue for the non-lawyers, or I guess it's not that technical, but it's not going to get anywhere. What we need to do is, I think, what I would be a proponent of would be kind of finding a way to push back in Sacramento, maybe be leading here to get it changed such that the, you know, the housing allowance and all of that be kind of reconfigured or re, we have to revisit it in full and we could break it down and talk about it more if you wanted, but someone's got to be pushing back against Sacramento. There's not a lot of space here. And I worry that if we're going to add here, it's going to mean up and it's going to mean more traffic. And up isn't good here, in my opinion. Again, we can put that in the back burner, but I don't even remember your original question, Paul.
So there is quite a bit of city or other cities are pushing against the arena numbers and how they're formulated. And I will say that they seem sometimes arbitrary in that we get a lot and other cities closer to us don't. So I'll let the other host ask some questions. And I got some things about the bigger issues that you would be deciding about on City Council if you're elected.
Sure. Can I put a pin just in that or just speak briefly? I may not have, and just so you understand, I may not have particular answers or specific questions of what would you do if? I think there is a little bit of a ramp up that is required. You can ask me, hey Darren, what do you think of pot stores in town? Do you want to, you want to have cannabis storefronts? I'll give you an answer. If you want to ask me like, okay, well, what do you think of this? You know, this measure was the, that's going to be a bit of a deep dive that I don't think I can really answer at this point. I think it requires a little bit of that taking on the data, then analyzing it and then going through. But I can give these, you know, tent pole positions. All right. Go ahead. Thank you.
No, I think.
I don't expect you to know everything and I'm not here to ask you got your questions.
No, no.
Yeah. No, and part of it too, Darren, is, you know, when you talk to the folks as a council, you know, potential council person, they're going to ask you these questions, you know, then they're going to say, hey, what do you think? Like you brought up cannabis. I do want to ask you some questions about that in a minute. But before I do, I do have a question though, in terms of, you know, you've been here for 10 years, right? So we started talking a little bit about the financial fitness of the city. For me, as a Redondo Beach resident, that's something that's really important to me is that our city be financially fit. I know you mentioned, you know, a lot of our funding does go towards staff and things of that nature, but we do require staff to run the city. So really what it comes down to is when we look at Redondo Beach compared to other cities, we do know factually that the majority of our money that we have to spend, it does come from property tax, whereas in every other city, it comes from tax, it comes from sales, sales revenue. So what are your thoughts around that? You know, I get what you're saying. Hey, maybe we can budget better, which of course, you know, I think it's always look at that and make sure. But, you know, we do need to make sure we keep a decent staff on hand to do the work, right? To do. We have to pay for stuff and it's expensive. Redondo Beach is huge. But what are your thoughts around improving our financial fitness? You know, I get the slow growth, but with that comes the fact that, you know, we don't have a good, just so you know, Redondo Beach does not have a good reputation with business owners wanting to open up business here in Redondo Beach for a variety of reasons. So I'm just curious, what is your take on that? What are your thoughts around that?
Or developers for projects and when you look at private partnerships, they, they don't trust us.
Correct. We have a bad.
More to that? I mean, I think there's an element where the city could obviously expedite some permitting and make it more, excuse me, make it more palatable or grease the runway, if you will, to have businesses come and expand and all of that. What do you mean specifically, if you can answer it, about how our reputation is bad and what's the barriers really? And why are, why we, why would we possibly be anything other than a premier destination for anyone, especially given our tourism opportunities?
Paul, this one is for you.
Okay, I'm going to go on mute. I'm going to let Paul.
You say we're, we, you know, we are, in some respects, we are a premier destination, but we could be much more. The, the, this leads into one of my questions about the bigger thing. Are you familiar with the general plan? And the, you know, the implications of the long-term implications of the general plan and the control that the City Council is going to have over that? It will come on the dais and it will be something that, that the council unilaterally can change drastically. They can.
You're talking about the plan that's the one through 2029 as well as Vision 2050? Is that what you're referencing?
Well, it's called the general plan and.
Running through 2029, the current one with the.
Yeah, we have, the city has a general plan. It's basically just like zoning. It's a big zoning map. That's all it is really. Yeah. But that, that we spent, Tanya and I were on the GPAC, which is the General Plan Advisory Committee. Spent eight years, you know, talking about that with 27 other residents and it's, it's, our work got truncated, but it was done. And now it's really just going to come to the Planning Commission and then it's going to go out to, go to the council and go out for a vote. I don't expect you to know everything about it. It's a huge document. But right now, the general plan is not congruent with this idea of growing a city as a, as a destination. It really kind of stops a lot of things that were happening in the city. We're not going to see a lot of the development that I wanted to see. And it wasn't high rises. This was just, let's fix things. We have parking problems on PCH. A lot of this issues that are being addressed on Artesia are, were not addressed on PCH. And so, you know, goes runs right through your district. And I don't know, I drive through down PCH all the time. I live in District Two. And I noticed a huge difference when you get into Hermosa and Manhattan Beach. I see progress. I see prosperity. There's parts of PCH and Redondo that I just haven't changed in 25, 30 years. And there's lots of empty storefronts and there's lots.
You think this is permitting and zoning that's causing?
It's zoning and it's also just the wrong zoning. There's, the general plan has a lot of, you know, they wanted office space, you know, majority, but we have two completely empty office buildings on PCH right by City Hall on Burrell and PCH. One is up for sale. It never had a tenant. It was built, it was never filled and it's up for sale that the builder wants to get out of here. So this is the problem I see that that's in the general plan. This is something that's going to be on your desk if you win office. And these are, these are the big decisions that you're going to have to make. So you don't have to give us specifics.
Whatever incentivizes them to do the work. I mean, that does sound like permitting, as you said, but well, as I said, and then zoning.
It's zoning and it will be voted on by everybody, but they, they did this with housing elements.
How is it not already zoned for business use? I mean, it's, it is. It's a building, as they say, they wouldn't have built it unless they had. So why is it empty?
Why is it empty? Because it was only zoned for office or certain commercial. There's prevailing ideas that, you know, mixed use might have been a bit of better zoning there. It would have given developers a lot more options.
Well, it's there now.
Parking permit problems or parking requirement problems on PCH that makes almost all the small businesses impossible to read, to build out. They can't do anything with those buildings because once they do, they have to have 10 parking spaces and their lots don't even have two parking spaces. Right. So it's just, it's, it's a real quagmire there. It's a, it's just stagnation that at its worst, and it wasn't addressed in the general plan. So maybe, maybe you can give us some ideas about that.
Well, I guess listening is the first step, right? I mean, how do we get these solutions here? What do people propose? Again, in this particular thing that you've talked about in boroughs, there, there's a building there that's not being used. That just, there's got to be a way to just somehow retroactively fix that, rezone it. I mean, again, the building is already there. So I mean, that, that scene, I don't know if that's a quick fix, but that, that doesn't seem really tenable that we would have space that's unused in a, what I, as I said, a premier place. However, the business owners want to be treated, I think I might be going to a roundtable in a couple of weeks about in the village. We'll see if I'm able to make it. And again, listening is really it. And I don't have concrete answers. And I think if there was easy ones, I think, wouldn't it have been that obvious to do? Who would be putting these roadblocks in the way of making the city more money? And why would it, what would be the motivation other than to be a good neighbor and help your fellow friend or, you know, yeah, what do you think?
I'm going to, I want to get right down to it. When you say things like slow growth, it sounds like you're going to be another one of those people that put roadblocks up.
I don't want a 2,700.
Let me just, I'm going to, I'm going to just say this for the people and we can just get right to it. When you say things like slow growth, it makes people think that we're going to continue to wind up with a dilapidated mall and peer. And all of those things matter. So with that in mind, and you're saying, and you know, we're talking about these roadblocks. The City Council has continued to put roadblocks in the way that allows for us to continue to have dilapidated spaces that should make this a premier place to not only live and play, but visit and work. They have made it very difficult. So with.
Growth to me means newness.
With that being said, my question to you would be, would you still use that word to describe yourself as slow growth, knowing how people feel about their mall, their peer, and these empty buildings and these continuously abandoned businesses on Artesia? And I guess that's the hard part when you say, well, I haven't really participated in what goes on around town. There is a history behind why these buildings are empty. There's a history behind why our parking structure falls down on people's cars on PCH. There's a history behind those things. So it's a little difficult to, I guess, to have the conversation about what slow growth means to you when that word in itself scares people that want to see growth and business elevated in the city that we live, work and play in.
Okay, so I'm using the word grow, as I said, to expand. Everything that you mentioned in that, in that list there was things that already exist. I mean, there's already space. There's businesses. There's malls. There's buildings. There's parking structures. These things are there. Why aren't we using the money and directing attention to that which is already there? My term of growth would mean adding cars to the road and you know, multi-use, multi, not multi-family, but you know, big complexes, as I said, with apartments and whatnot. Growth to me means that. Getting a handle on what is already here and making it better, that's not growth in my definition. That's common sense. So if I'm using the term wrong or it's, you know, it's ringing a different ear, that is not at all what I'm saying. It's quite the opposite. I mean, I don't know if this is a certain buzzword, but slow growth to me means, means slow expansion of new people coming to town. I mean, this is, as I said, it's already busy. There's nowhere else really to put a lot of things. But if we have the things, we have to improve the things and make them accessible. So building and directing attention there, that is what I mean. Again.
So I guess you would characterize yourself as smart growth.
Sure, that's a much better phrase. I'll work on using that, but I still don't like the word grow there because grow is this verb of, 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 you know, in, of not, it's the verb of size increases. I don't want size increases. I want improvements to that which exists. That's not growth in my definition.
So just to, just to expand on that, let me just ask this question really quick. If we're talking about improving on what we have, meaning getting businesses into areas that we already have business space.
Right.
It also means helping them to be profitable, which means more people are going to have to patronize those businesses, which means they're going to be more, I'm sorry, what?
Why more?
What? Because we, they need to be profitable, like.
They don't need more people to be.
It's not cheap to do business here. You can't just have, you can't just have Redondo Beach people doing business with businesses. Nobody wants that. It's too expensive to run a business in Redondo Beach and only have Redondo residents. So in order for them to be profitable and, and do well and want to stay here, they're going to have to attract other people to their businesses, especially when we're talking. they're going to have to attract other people to their businesses, especially when we're talking about the South Bay. It is, it's really how the South Bay businesses prosper. We go to Torrance, we go to Manhattan Beach, we all support each other. But when you say things like that, and then you hear things like, we don't want more traffic. How are businesses supposed to want to even open a business here if it sounds like city council, people that make decisions, want them to say exclusive to the current population? That's not profitable for them. So I'm just trying to understand um, how leadership would promote, sincerely promote businesses and profitability when you're saying, well, we don't want any more traffic. Well, no more traffic means no more profits because that's how these businesses make money.
Well, I'm going to fundamentally disagree with the business model that you're discussing. The if you play out your situation or your, your suggestion, I suppose, you'll eventually hit a cap. I mean, you're, you're running into a space thing where there's just too many people. You'll, you'll eventually be in a situation where you can't add more people. There but eventually running into a situation where you're going to find that every business is now in the position that they're in now, and they have to only operate within the people who are already in our district or something like already in our, in our city. I think we've already reached that spot. You're asking to expand to add new people when that might've been good when there was extra land and, uh, ample opportunity to grow. But playing out the scenario will he hit the ceiling. And I think we've hit the ceiling there, meaning that it is on, it is incumbent upon the business to run a better business. That may be harsh, but that's just the truth of it. The market has to decide. You don't need to add more consumers. You need to add more not, more, more widgets to whatever you're selling or, or improve your business model to generate the income. We don't have space for a ton more growth. We have to follow certain growth laws. I understand that, otherwise I'd still like to push back against the state a little bit there. But you can't simply say, no, well, we just have to keep adding people. What, what are we going to do? Bust in people to come shopping eventually? I mean, no, this is ample. The space is full. I don't see it that way.
So, okay. So Darren, let me, let me, um, bring the, a question about the mall. So we have a mall. We have the South Bay Galleria.
The space.
It's there, right? And so in order for the South Bay Galleria to become the South Bay Social District, or it's what, that's what it's called now. Yeah, before COVID, so like what, 2018, 2019, they wanted to revitalize the mall. The mall owners wanted to revitalize the mall. And they said, in order to do that, we need to, you know, if, if you're an investor in the mall, you're going to want a return on your investment. So to make it, you know, I don't know if you've been to like Irvine Spectrum or to any of those, kind of those newer mall situations. You have a mix of condos slash apartments and then mall, right? Retail. So there was this idea, we will build, I can't remember, 300, 350 units there. And from that, we can also revitalize the small area. And then people, this small group of people spoke out against it, didn't want the 350 units. COVID hit. Or, and now we're in a situation where that investor is now gone. Things have gotten much more expensive. Now they're talking about 600 or 650 units. And Paul, if my numbers are wrong, just tell me, but it's somewhere like 300, 350. Now it's up to 600 to 650, whatever it is, to now do the mall. And they're having a really hard time finding somebody to revitalize the mall. So as a result, we have this huge mall space. It's not getting revitalized. There is a concern that has been verbalized that, hey, if we can't get somebody to invest in this area in this mall, it's going to turn into Amazon warehouses. And that would be horrendous for Redondo Beach. So when I bring it to you in that perspective, that is the concern Redondo Beach residents have is that's what's happening at the mall. So that's to give you that history and that perspective. That's, and it's accurate. And then also looking at the pier, we have all this pier space and what's happening there. So I just want to bring this to you in that perspective, because as you're running for this office, if you were to win the office seat, this is stuff that is going to be on your table and the expectation is we're going to want leaders in place to improve the city. To your point, what we have now to improve that and how does that look? And Tanya is right. If people are going to come to the mall, it can't just be Redondo Beach residents. It has to be South Bay residents. And people like, people go to the Irvine Spectrum. We live here in the South Bay. We drive out to Irvine to go to Irvine Spectrum. People go to the Irvine Spectrum all over LA, right? And that's why it's a successful mall. So I just want you to see that point of view.
Not that I'm advocating for Amazon warehouses, but why would it be terrible in your opinion?
The trucks would just
Great, totally agree. Terrible. What else?
Yeah. So I mean, that's just it. It takes away, I mean, but we live here, right? Do you, you have, you have a 19-year-old. We want an area people can go enjoy their selves, have entertainment, places for the kids to go. We want to keep the movie theater. There's a movie theater there. People go there. But we also want others, you know, we want to be able to have a city. The city can't just be like people live here in their houses and then a couple grocery stores and it's shitty. You want places that are entertaining. You guys have the Riviera Village in South Redondo, right? Like in the last 10 years, I used to live just a block from the Riviera Village back in 2013, when my husband and I first got married. It wasn't that fun. There was like Hennessy's. There was like a few places, but it's nothing like it is today. It's taken leadership that has put time and effort, a Riviera Village Association, putting a lot of work in to revitalize and improve that area. Why wouldn't we want the same thing in North Redondo? And why would people that don't have that interest?
Sure. You can want it, but this ultimately comes back to the role of government and the need really for business folk to be on the forefront of doing the work that they want. You would like to have a mall there and we, okay, you'd like to utilize
There, there's a mall.
Utilize the mall that is there. How can the businesses generate income? Is on the businesses to answer that question. We need to provide infrastructure so that they can do so. We need to be able to say, yes, we're going to green light that we want X, Y, and Z to be allowed to be done here. But what can the city do other than approve or deny certain requests? We can't just give them money. Hey, build a mall, please. Use our tax dollars for that. What do you suggest that a city do to develop the work that the business owners are going to reap the benefit of themselves?
You have to support and have a good reputation in the business community. You can't say, no, you cannot build your 350 units. You have to be able to support and say, what can you do to, what can, what can we as a city do to not put up roadblocks after roadblock after roadblock for you to build this business?
There shouldn't be roadblocks.
And there are roadblocks.
But there are.
Roadblocks to good plans.
Okay, let's, let's bring this back to District One. And here's a good example. The Logano project, I'm sure you're very familiar with it. It essentially is a very big mixed-use project. It, it met a lot of resistance, but it had, it followed all the rules. It, it met all the codes or all those zoning codes. And, uh, it, it had to be approved. Uh, people were against it because just what it is, it was something new. Um, and what was there was shut down buildings, shuttered businesses, and really just a magnet for, you know, trouble.
How much of the project was, uh, affordable housing for the, the, that phrase?
At the time, I don't think it was more than seven units.
So that's very small. Okay. Um, so my thinking is that the, the, the project was pushed back because obviously the, the people don't, most, you know, the residents don't like new traffic.
Well, yeah, the, 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 the organization or the people that worked, worked against it were against the apartment aspect of it. The hotel was already there and people come and go from the hotel constantly, uh, and it's coming back. Uh, there was retail on the corner there and that's coming back, but they had added a residential component. And, uh, they shaved off maybe a hundred units. I can't recall the exact number, but they did, Logano did work with the, uh, the, the, um, constituency and the government, uh, the Redondo government at the time to, to shrink that residential component. But it was zoned for that. And that was the current zoning. They could have built whatever they wanted or not whatever they would. They could have built much, many more units. I think about a hundred more units. But they chose not to, trying to work with the government, trying to work with the city. The i- it's here, you know, it's being built. And I don't know if you were involved with that 10 years ago, or if, um, in, in what your feelings are about it right now. And, and I mean, to me, it's a huge improvement to what was there.
Well, if what was there is obviously not being used. And what can be used? And also we have to provide some housing. We have to grow a little bit. Certainly we have to adapt and respond and improve and clean up and, uh, make use of, of space that is appropriate. That the people push back a little bit that they don't want so much, or I guess that's understandable in some sense. Uh, they want some, so, uh,
I mean, that was, by the way, that was led by the current District One Councilman.
But you said that they're also, right, they're also, this is also on the developer. What is the developer wanting to do? It's zoned for that. They scaled back because you guys were making the point, I think you're, you were making the point that the roadblocks are in place. But you, uh, I don't know if you identify what the roadblocks really were other than that the, the developer didn't really want to pursue it further themselves, or they're pursuing in a different capacity. But how was the city really putting up, uh, barriers to making that what happened?
Well, to get into it, it was, they were working to approve the plans. The plans allowed for a certain amount of residential units. And the city was really threatening and, and trying to stop the plants where Logano had every legal right to do it and they, they knew it. Um, they, it came down to a threat of litigation. And it was basically Redondo folded, the council folded. Um, because they knew they didn't have a legal land leg to stand on, you know.
Right. It shouldn't have been litigious. It shouldn't have been contentious at all. They have the right. They have planet. Well, this doesn't make sense to me. It's already zoned for this and that's pre-approved. There's no reason to put in barriers. You just want to be friendly to development and business. And let the market decide what it ought to be. That just seems so common sense. I don't know why people would. Again, you know, there, there's some, there's some intricacies there. There, there must be other things go up. Other buildings get built. Why, why so much pushback there?
Yeah.
Well, listen, we want to thank you for spending time here on the platform and letting us get to know you a little bit. I'm going to suggest you probably should do some more research as to some of these uh, non-common sense type of boundaries that have been put up, uh, to help us make the best use of what we already have. There is a history there and, um, it makes sense to have a strategy on how you deal with nonsensical things because it seems like you have, you know, a little sense there. So, you know, just a little advice, but for the most part, uh, we wish you the best. And let the people know how they can support you and, you know, follow your journey and vote for you and get all the information they need about Mr. Darren King.
Okay, uh, certainly. So, uh, just okay. So obviously, you know, the website to the thing these days, Darren King, it's, uh, comically, I don't think my parents planned this. It's just spelled like the word drinking, except for the second letter is an N. So D A R I N K I N G. Uh, I think that'll pretty much be any link that one needs to, uh, the Facebook or the next door or anything else that's going on uh, on the social media side. Uh, you know, my email's there. I'm trying to reach out and talk to people, call people, knock on doors, all those things, uh, see me around, say hi. Yeah, I guess that's it. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for allowing me to, to come and speak and, and, uh, answer the questions. I mean, speaking about, just if I could touch base on what you said about this research, I mean, I, I want to identify and actually celebrate the fact that I don't think while, while it may be enlightening to understand why people have pushed back in the past on things, I'm not really intend necessarily on finding too much wisdom in rehashing or examining that. If someone comes with something good and they can present it, that it ought to be considered, I would consider it. I don't need to know why in the past necessarily people cared. I understand that we want to understand why, as Miriam said, our, our, our reputation may not be as stellar as it ought to be. I mean, it should be a Mecca here. Uh, so that's important. I appreciate, and I take your constructive criticism there, but uh, things should really be forward-facing and obvious in the fact that we all agree, I would think more or less, excuse me, on wanting the things that we want, safety, parks, you know, business opportunity. I mean, it's all so obvious. It's in that Vision 2050 plan. I mean, it's so there. Who doesn't want that? Why, why would anybody be anything other than just, uh, you know, commiserating about how, you know, or, you know, we're working together in, in getting us there. So, uh, thank you again for that. And, uh, thanks for having me.
All right. Thank you so much and best of luck on your campaign.
Thanks for taking the time, Darren. I really appreciate it. And good luck to you.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, guys. So we were actually going to, um, close out with letting the people know a little bit more about this election and why it's important and, and all that good stuff. Paul, do you want to, um, kind of open that up really quick?
Elections in March, it's all male in, in election and it is also ranked choice voting. So you're going to rank every candidate if you wish. Uh, your first choice, second choice, third, fourth, fifth, depending on what office that they are in. Um, it's going to be something new for people. Um, and it, the whole idea was to eliminate runoff, so the need for runoff elections. I don't know if it's the best thing, but the, the city did vote on this and they, they approved that we were going to have ranked choice voting. Um, you, you just met Darren. He's running in District One. There's, uh, two other candidates there. Uh, we have five candidates for mayor, two candidates in District Four and, um, two candidates in my district, District Two. So we're hoping to have, uh, many of those, uh, candidates on the show here and talk to them, just like we did Darren. Uh, they're welcome to come. Uh, they know what they're getting into. So, uh, got handed to Darren. He did a good job. Um, and, uh, we welcome the other candidates.
Absolutely. So there's some information right there. If you want to screenshot it or whatever the case, but know what's going on in your community, understand who the people are, what they represent, what kind of solutions they're going to bring in order to improve, you know, the quality of life where you live, work and play. Um, yeah. Anything else before we get out of here, good people?
No, just make sure you guys vote. March 4th is the day the ballots are due. Um, and then I think ballots are supposed to be coming out like this week, next week, sometime this week and next week. So keep an eye open and please vote.
Make sure that, uh, you guys tune in. So follow, subscribe and you'll get alerts on every show that pops up. We are going to have more candidates come and speak on their, uh, their stance with, what they're trying to bring to the table. So if you want to know more about these people, stick around. We will be back next week and hopefully we'll see you there.
Bye, everyone.
Hey, thanks for showing up to the podcast where we all know that the best leaders are lifetime learners. When you get a sec, take a moment, leave a comment, what you think about today's episode? And share it with someone that you know could use the gems that were dropped today. Follow and subscribe. You don't want to miss who's coming up next. You never know who could show up here and what they could say. For your professional needs, marketing, PR, communications or leadership, make sure you follow us on all social media platforms at Sand and Shores or hit us up at sandandshores.com. Again, thanks so much for showing up. We appreciate you and we'll see you soon.